Good evening, everyone. We're now going to call the meeting, the first meeting of the Measure G Citizens Oversight Committee to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Member Lyman? Member Savano? Member Van Dyke? Member Whipple? All right.
So our first order of business tonight is Organization and Orientation, Item 2A. And that's the Measure G Citizen Oversight Committee Orientation. And our clerk will be giving a presentation on that.
Thank you, City Manager Ovid. So, good evening, members of the committee. I'm Tammy Taylor, the Cattati City Clerk. This will be just a brief orientation to help you become somewhat familiar with your role as a member of a council-appointed advisory body. Some information about Measure G, what it accomplished, how long it will last. It was approved in 2014 and will sunset nine years after that in 2023. The measure increased Cattati sales tax by 1%. And the required annual audit, you'll notice, is completed and available on the website. And it requires citizen oversight, which is why you are here. So, to comply with Measure G, the City Council established this committee by resolution, Resolution Number 2015-64, describes the committee's responsibilities. A copy is in your packet, and the full list of responsibilities is also on the committee's meeting portal webpage. Very briefly, they are to meet annually or as needed. You are subject to the Brown Act. We'll get more into that later. Your capacity is that of an advisory body. And you are, you will, this committee provides oversight of Measure G revenue. It provides an annual report to the City Council. And also to provide staff, input to staff and the council on community and outreach, community education and outreach regarding Measure G revenue. So this list contains both what the committee does and what it doesn't. So note that the scope is pretty narrow. There's no review of other revenue. It only involves that portion, that 1% portion of Measure G revenue. And decision-making on spending priorities, that is a privilege reserved for the City Council. So, as members of a council-appointed advisory body, you are public servants. Emphasis on the public. If you recall, when the council made your appointments, all of your information was in the packet. Your names are on the web. But that's okay. You know, around here, we celebrate public service. So, we're very happy that you've decided to serve in this capacity. As public servants, you are subject, as we mentioned, to open meetings. That is the Brown Act. You may have heard of that. It's a term that gets mentioned a lot, at least around here. And the idea for transparency is just transparency generally to the public. And committee members will also, as committee members, you'll also be fulfilling requirements to do with ethics and economic interests that are described in the Political Reform So here's Mr. Ralph M. Brown himself. The M stands for Milton. He was a California State Assembly member. He's also a former Speaker of the Assembly. The Brown Act was passed in 1953, and it is California's first sunshine law, informally known as. The Brown Act promotes transparency of city and agency business. It also governs agenda content and posting times. So everything that is put on the agenda, not just for your body, but all agencies and bodies, City Council and all the others, is very deliberate. It's very in compliance with the Brown Act. It also governs posting times. And the city's policy is to make sure that it is available to the committee with the same time that it's posted. So, but the Brown Act governs all of that information, and that, that timing is, is per the Brown Act. And it also guarantees the right to the, members of the public to comment at a meeting. And the City of Cattati has its own sunshine with its meeting portal. We actually exceed Brown Act requirements on a really, really, it's very seldom, we may just get that agenda up there just in time, but it will always generally, generally will exceed that by, by a couple of days, actually, because we want to get that information out to you. Plus, there's a lot of other information on the meeting portal that isn't required at all, but we just feel it's important for the public to know. So the Brown Act defines everything to do with a meeting and an agency, including the word "meeting," and what makes up a regular meeting and a special meeting. Generally, a meeting is a majority of the members deliberating or taking action, whether they're together in a room at a noticed meeting like this one, or otherwise communicating with each, communicating with each other to reach a collective concurrence. So that's one, we just want to point these out to you, just to make sure you're aware of them. And the ideal, of course, is you're only going to be discussing city business at a noticed meeting like this one. And just to be aware, the definitions of a serial meeting, common, common ones are the daisy chain, where Member A contacts Member B, contacts Member C, et cetera, until a quorum or a majority and a collective concurrence has been established as to some committee business that was all done outside of a public meeting. And the other common one is a spoken hub, it's called. And that means one person is the hub, could be a committee member, staff member, member of the public, just somebody communicating with members of a legislative body as the spokes. Just kind of talking individually, but in that conversation, revealing their views of the other members. So those are things to be aware of. And what's not a meeting? Well, the Brown Act does clarify that there are times when you might be with one or more colleagues, and it would not be considered a meeting, even if there are a majority of you present. That could happen at a conference that's open to the public, maybe a local public meeting, a City Council meeting, or of another body, or at a social or ceremonial event. Those, but that's just fine to attend, and if you see your, felt your colleagues there, that's fine, too. But you still cannot discuss committee business. So that's the Brown Act in a very small nutshell. There's a lot more, but I think for, for that, that's, that's enough at the moment. But there's more. There's more, more Brown Act for now, but there is, there's some more government code. That one specifically is the Political Reform Act. The Political Reform Act was established by the voters, where the Brown Act was a legislative action. The voters themselves adopted the Political Reform Act back in the 1970s to, in response to concerns about money. Money, who, who was contributing to political campaigns, and how was that money being spent? And there were also concerns about decisions that were being made by elected and appointed officials, and whether those officials were realizing an economic benefit by those committees, by those decisions. So the Fair Political Practices Commission, the FPPC, oversees the Political Reform Act. The main things mandated by this act that involve this, this, this body here are a two-hour ethics training and an annual disclosure of your economic interests in Cattati. You've all done a great job. You've all complied with that. Economic interest disclosure, it's on our website. More of that, public servants, you know, no privacy. And so you've done that, you're good for the year on that. And the ethics training is required every two years, but you have to start it within a year of your assuming office. So I'll be following up with you on that. It's an online training. That's the easiest way to take it, but there are, there's, there's ample opportunity, and we'll make sure that you're aware and have opportunity to fulfill that requirement. So now that is, very briefly, that is it. I want to thank you for your attention. And here are some resources for you. A copy of this presentation will be posted on the meeting portal, and we'll let you know when that is done. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I possibly need a little assistance from my city, our city attorney, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Tammy, I also will add, I was remiss to not introduce our city attorney, Robin Donahue, who is an expert in these areas as well. So between Tammy and Robin, I'm sure they can answer any questions that you guys have on these topics. So with that, happy to field any questions on those. No? Okay. All right. Is there any public comment on Item 2A? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to Item 2B, which is the election of the Chair and Vice-Chair, and also establishing Rosenberg's Rules of Order as the guide for parliamentary procedure for the meeting. And as, as you know, the committee needs to establish a chair, and the chair, the role of the chair is to, is to manage and guide the meetings. And the role of the Vice-Chair is to step in for the chair when the chair's unavailable. And there's a couple of different ways that the, the Chair or Vice-Chair could be selected. One is, and both could be fairly typical. One is amongst yourselves, you can decide who wants to be Chair or Vice-Chair. Or you could also mirror the City Council Mayor and Vice-Mayor, and that rotates every year, and that would be another alternative. And in that case, we have, you know, Mayor Moore, Committee Member Whipple, would be the nominee for the mayor currently. And we have Vice, the Vice Mayor Harvey selected Committee Member Savano. So that would be the, that would be the composition this year, if that was the alternative selected. And I'll also just point out that the Rosenberg's Rules of Order are in the packet, and it's, parliamentary procedure is just the basic procedure for how the meetings, how the, how public comment's selected, how the chair manages the meeting, and, and the types of votes or motions that can be taken by the, by the committee. And there's, we actually had a fairly lengthy discussion with council about this very topic recently. And Robert's Rules of Orders is another commonly-known method of parliamentary procedure, but that's generally much more complicated and intended for more of like a national parliament-type process, where Rosenberg's is, is more refined for local government and easier to manage. So if anybody has any questions on either the selection of the Chair or Vice-Chair, or the Rosenberg Rules of Order, we'd be happy to, to field those questions.
Can we look at that? If somebody in the group wants to be Chair? Is that allowed? We haven't discussed that yet.
Sure, yeah.
What would you have, you want to have a question?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you can either select among yourselves, or you could select based on the Mayor and I, I don't have any preference, so I think following the nominations from the Mayor and the Vice-Mayor makes sense, and we can rotate. That's fine with me, but...
That works if no one else wants, if no one else wants to be Chair.
You want to be Chair.
I'll be it by default if no one else wants to.
That's fine. I think that works well.
Vice-Chair.
Yes.
Sure, that works.
Okay, so, keep it simple. Yeah. All right, so do we have any, do we have any public comment on this item?
At the City Council meetings, they've modified the Rosenberg Rules of Order, so if it's possible, I'd like clarification from whether it is the city's modified Rosenberg Rules, or the pure rules that are on the City League of California Cities. Thank you.
Sure.
The Rosenberg Rules that are in your packet are the official Rosenberg Rules of Order. They're used by a number of cities in California and probably elsewhere. I think what our speaker was talking about is at the same time, or essentially the same time that the City Council decided to use Rosenberg's Rules, they also adopted rules for the conduct of council meetings, which are actually much more detailed, and they cover a lot of the same ground that is in Rosenberg's Rules. So I think the speaker sees that as a modification of Rosenberg's Rules. Actually, the council rules control the council meetings, and part of what they adopted was to say that in terms of parliamentary procedure, they were going to go with Rosenberg's Rules rather than Robert's Rules. You don't have specific rules for the conduct of your meeting. Most of the other, the advisory committees don't have that. It's basically the council. So for you, you would be looking to the Rosenberg's Rules for your main guidance. I hope that answers the questions.
Okay, so pending any comment on that. Well, we have two motions, and I'd be looking to entertain a, a motion and a second on establishing Rosenberg's Rules of Order as the guide for the parliamentary procedure.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. And then the second motion tonight is the election of the committee Chair and Vice-Chair. And so I'd be looking for a, a motion on that in a second.
Okay, I'll make the motion that Suzanne Whipple can be our chairman.
And then the, and the Vice-Chair also as well.
Sorry.
And I'll second.
Okay. Suzanne, you have a second? I don't know that I can second my own, but I was seconding that one. So, and so the, just to clarify, the motion and the second on the floor is Suzanne Whipple as the Chair and Ken Savano as the Vice-Chair. And then to rotate with the council, that's Mayor and Vice-Mayor. Great. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations, Committee Member Whipple. The meeting is now yours.
So we're on to public comment. And does this have to do with the rest of the agenda? Am I correct?
With items on the agenda.
Ah, got it. So we have one comment from Lori Alderman.
I gave you a copy, I gave Tamara, who gave you guys all a copy of my comment. The city is making this up as they go. They did not have any bookkeeping of Measure G monies. They, Sunday, there was no financials. Last night, there was not, there was financials, and I sent an email to Damian and Norm, and they said they changed them again today. Their, their, the annual financial statements had no designation of what Measure G funds were. They, we don't know how they even divided these all up. I don't know where they got their figures, because there's not anywhere else in the city financial statements. They, they've been saying it's for city essential services. That would have been a specific tax, and would require two-thirds of a majority of voters. This was a general tax, which required 51. Diane Thompson, in September 2014, added community development and capital improvement projects. It is not a city essentials measure, as it is repeatedly said in this one. Because of this, Cattati has the highest sales tax in the county. It's caused that Noah County or Fire District can have more than a fourth of a cent, because we use up 1.75 of 2% cap. And that, so like the Rancho Adobe Fire District, or this, this County of Sonoma cannot have over 1/4th of a percent to 22, 2023. The city, we all, as, according to thecaliforniocities.com, we were, we pay $220 per capita for our sales tax presently under Measure G. The state median is 110. We already are paying double. This, also, this committee is a review committee. They're having you review the financial statements, and you have no power. And that's not what you, we all voted on. We voted on having an oversight committee which looks to the future. I urge you not to rubber stamp this, and I, and to call meetings on this, because this is not what it seems to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does staff want to address any of her concerns?
Well, I guess I would point out that Measure G is a 1% tax. It's a general tax, and as you can see by the financials, it's spent in general ways. A special purpose tax is things that you, like a special, you identify a very specific purpose for that tax, and you use it only for that very specific purpose. And this isn't that. This is a general tax. So I guess I'll just leave it at that, unless there's more specific questions.
I was a little confused about her pointing out that we can only do another quarter cent sales tax, there's a limit of 2%. I'm not familiar with that.
So, under state law, if, it actually might be instructive if you, just to jump ahead for a minute.
Okay.
If we get to the, the Measure G report, this is packet page 98, page 5 of 15 in the, in the Measure G report. So on that, on that page, there's a table entitled California Sales and Use Tax Rates, and then there's a pie chart below that. So the, the information that was, the speaker presented was, was, was not factual in terms of the tax rate, but what, I think what the point was, or what, what the speaker was trying to get to, was that there is a, if you look at the state county transportation funds, and then Bradley Burns, it adds up to 7.5%. And so that's the, that's the sales tax, the base sales tax that would, that you'd find anywhere in the state of California. And then in Sonoma County, you have those other two. So you have three taxes. It's Measure Q, which is the quarter cent for SMART. Measure M, which is a quarter cent for county transportation funding. And then, I forgot the measure number, but the open space and ag preservation quarter cent. So those three added together are 0.75%. And then Measure G, as you know, is 1%. And so, under state law, under state law, any, any area can, can add an additional 2% over the state tax. And so the state tax, in this case, is 7.5%. So you can add two more percent to that. Without a legislative change, 2% is your max.
I understand now. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Okay, so we're going to close public comment. Actually, do we have any other public comment before I close it? Okay, now we're going to close public comment. So we're moving on to Item 4, Regular Agenda.
Norm Veloso, Director of Admin Services. Including your packet is the City of Cattati Measure A Annual Report. But tonight, I will provide a synopsis of this report, just to kind of give you an overview, a quick overview of what's in the report. To start off, on June 3, 2014, the voters of Cattati passed Measure G to provide funding for the essential city services. Measure G superseded and replaced Measure A, which was set to expire in 2015. Measure G continues to fund basic city services, including preserving our local police department, but it's also allowing the City Council to prioritize service improvements in key priority areas in fiscal year 14, 15, including hiring a new police officer, bringing back the motor officer position to improve the traffic safety in Cattati, converting a contract part-time building official to a permanent position for timely building inspections and code enforcement, allowing for improved services in areas such as street maintenance and repairs, landscape maintenance, and street light, traffic signal maintenance, and also allowing the city to leverage grand funds for projects that benefit the community. Currently, Measure G also allows the City Council to add a public works maintenance worker, that's moving ahead in fiscal year 15, 16, to improve infrastructure, the maintenance of, the infrastructure maintenance, and also bringing back a recreation program, which is currently at full speed in putting together leisure activities for the community. Again, Measure G's a one-cent sales tax for nine years, that will expire in 2023. It's more like paying $1 on a $100 purchase of an item. Measure G revenue and expenditures were audited by an independent auditor as part of the city's year-end audit. The auditor gave an opinion that the city's fiscal year 14, 15 financial statements present fairly in all material respects, and that the financial position of the city in conformance with all applicable GASP accounting rules and regulations. The independent auditor also found that the city's financial statements were free of material misstatements. In fiscal year 14, 15, the first partial year of revenue for the Measure G, the city generated 1.34 million in fiscal year 14, 15. That is three-quarters of the fiscal year 14, 15, which started in October 1, 2014. Out of the 1.34 million, the city used 62% or 831,000 to fund city operations and maintenance, and 38% of that was for improvement projects and equipment. To provide a, a better understanding of the public benefits of this Measure G, we created four programs for you, which includes a public safety program, a street sidewalk and storm drain program, the recreation program, and the public building program. Under the operations and maintenance expenses, as I've said, 62% of that, out of the 1.34 million, to fund ongoing operations and expenses, 11% of that was for the streets, sidewalk, and storm drain. 39% for public safety program, 7% for park and landscape program, and 6% for public building program. Included in the operations and maintenance expenses are contract services... So included in the operations and maintenance expenses are contract services, vehicle maintenance, materials and repairs, vehicle fuel, utilities, and salaries and benefits. Under the contract services, we have street sidewalks, and that includes landscaping, traffic signal maintenance, and tree removal and sidewalk repairs. That is for the streets and sidewalks program. Under the public safety, we have contract services that deals with animal shelter, HVAC repairs and radio repairs, backup generator services, servicing, and landscape maintenance and pest control. Under the park and landscape program, we do have contract services for landscape services, tree maintenance, restrooms, and portalets. Under the public... Under the public building, we do have security systems, cameras, alarms, and janitorial services, and HVAC repairs under the contract services. So we presented to you, uh, the, the operations and maintenance expenses, followed up by the capital improvements, um, and equipment that funded, that was funded by Measure G. In fiscal year 14, 15, the city used 30% of the 1.34 million to pay in part for various capital improvements and equipment purchases. 20, 26% of the Measure G's 1.34 was used for various projects in streets, sidewalk, and storm drains, including the downtown specific plan, 2014 pavement maintenance, the old Redwood Highway South, and the West Sierra project repair, shoulder repair. 3% of that also went to the public safety improvements, which covered two police cruiser vehicle replacements. 2% of that went to the park and landscape improvements, which includes the Draper Park Safety Lighting, the water fountains at Putnam and La Plaza Parks, and the Kater Basketball Court Resurfacing. Under the public building improvements, we utilized 7% of the 1.34, uh, Measure G to cover the Cattati Train Depot and leverage a $1.7 million of federal grant, and two public works maintenance vehicle replacements. Measure G is about preserving our small town of Cattati, the town that is, um, providing services to the people of Cattati, maintaining our identity and continuing to provide the services that the community desires. Measure G has allowed the city to preserve our local police department and continue to provide essential services. It also allowed key priority areas to be bolstered by the city council, including public safety with new officers, traffic, police officers, and building official. It also, uh, maintained our infrastructure, including road maintenance, landscape maintenance, street and signal maintenance, and it also helped us leverage, uh, available grants to bring additional funding for the city of Cattati. In the current 15, 16, we are also bringing back the recreation services program, and we are also adding a new maintenance worker to improve responsiveness to the basic infrastructure maintenance needs of the city. That ends the presentation. Looking for any questions?
Is there, are there any questions from the committee?
Uh, clarification on the public building improvements, and I know this is last fiscal year, um, the Cattati Train, uh, Train Depot, there was 6% used, but you said you leveraged a federal grant, was that right?
Yes.
What was that dollar amount of that grant?
We received $1.7 million of federal grants, and we use about 6% of the 1.34 million to match those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. Did the city council give specific amounts, percentages, or dollar amounts for these items? How were the, how were these determined?
The, um, the city council set the spending priorities, and then, um, the Measure G funds themselves are either wholly or partially funding various priorities that are in this, um, report tonight.
Got it. So, did they set the priorities according to the amounts spent? For instance, if there was more spent for, looks like public safety had the biggest expenditure, was that number one in priority, and then followed by street, sidewalk, and storm drain?
You know, I think the, um, uh, the, the priorities were, there was a group of priorities, both capital, some capital priorities that, you know, we, that Norm talked about, and then also some recruitment in key areas. And so I don't know that there's a specific numbering of prioritization, but it was, um, a phasing of, a phasing of prioritization. So we had, in fiscal year 14, 15, like Norm said, we had the, um, the new police officer, the motor officer, um, converting a building official from a part-time contractor to full-time. And, um, at that same time in 14, 15, they also said, we want to, you know, we'd like to look, look, um, look towards bringing back recreation programs, but 14, 15, we're not quite ready yet. Um, so that came in, in the current fiscal year 15, 16. And in 14, 15, they also, um, set a priority to hire an additional public works maintenance worker, but just the time it took to recruit meant it didn't, just didn't land in this year, so it went to the next year. So the, the timing of things affects the relative
Right.
... funding amounts. And, um, one thing I will point out, I mean, maybe it's obvious, but as various, as we get, like, let's say a big federal grant becomes available to us, and, um, there's an opportunity to leverage that and, um, you know, leverage basically 20, you know, well, actually, the new grants now are 11 cents to, you know, 89 cents of grant money. So for every 11 cents we put in, we get 89 cents of grant money. So when opportunities like that come along, we look for ways to leverage it. So from year to year, I think you'll, um, I guess my, my expectation is that from year to year, these percentages will vary
Mm-hmm.
... based on, um, what's happening in that particular fiscal year. But the, I think the common, the, the common and consistent theme is that, is that most of, most of the funding will go towards just basic operations, these essential services.
Right.
And then the capital piece of it will vary from year to year.
I guess why I'm asking, sorry, just to, to follow up. If part of our job in overseeing this expenditure of Measure G funds is to make sure that it's, it's being spent the, the way the council would like it to be spent, um, then it would be helpful to know what their priorities were, and then we can see if that's kind of holding true for the expenditures. So it, it may be in the future going forward, if we could have a summary of, of the priorities for Measure G, then we would know if it was being spent the way that the council wanted. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
No, thank you.
Okay, what's our next step?
So, um, if there's, if there's no further, um, questions on the report, um, we should discuss the, uh, the summary letter to the city council. And, um, just to, I guess, facilitate the discussion and get it going, I, um, I put together just a real brief summary letter that you can use as a starting point. And you can choose to use it, or you can add review comments to it if you would like to, um, at the pleasure of the committee.
And what's the, um, timeline for getting the summary letter to the council?
We, um, we were looking, we were targeting either the, the next meeting or the meeting after, um, so that would be March 22nd or April 12th, to transmit the Measure G annual report to the council, um, with a cover letter from the committee. And, um...
Yeah, so, um, at least we know what we're working towards. What, personally, I would, I would like to take the report home and kind of, um, digest it a little bit and mull it over, and then look at what you've written for a draft and possibly offer potential edits to, um, maybe make it more clear. And one of my goals for this committee would be to also make whatever we're, we're putting out also as something that can be used to educate the public. So if we can break it down into clearer language, or have examples, or pictures, I don't know, um, then we can use, it'll be more of a working document that we can share with the public. Anyone else have any, any comments or ideas?
Well, what Tammy just gave us is, uh, already past. Will we receive something for the upcoming or the current fiscal year?
Aren't we reviewing it for the past?
We're reviewing.
Yeah, we're reviewing the past, and, and basically saying this is how the funds were spent, and, um, letting the council know that we've reviewed it and agree with it? Is that kind of the gist?
Yeah, just, it's reviewing, um, reviewing the expenditures from the prior year and making sure they're consistent with the, um, the letter of Measure G and the intent of Measure G. And, um, to piggyback on what you said, so one of the, one of the committee's duties in the adopting resolution too is, is, um, to suggest, you know, ways to educate the public, so that would dovetail nicely if that, if something like that were added. If, if that's the committee's, if that's the committee's pleasure, then we could either talk about that tonight, if there's some specific ideas that committee members want to provide, um, or, an alternative, there's a couple alternatives, that's one alternative. Um, another alternative, if, you know, committee members need more time to review the report, they can either delegate the authority to funnel the letter with the chair, and then everyone gets a copy of it afterwards, or the third alternative is to reconvene at another date.
Go ahead, Ken.
I just wanted to comment that I, I reviewed the annual report, which I think, uh, would help facilitate that public education about how the dollars were spent, um, but I'm also respectful to my colleagues on the panel if they feel more of that education is necessary. I feel like that's the document that should carry the message back to the people about what that revenue, uh, you know, how much was collected and what we spent it on. So, you know, I, I feel that it adequately tells that story for, for this fiscal year. It was a partial fiscal year, and having reviewed that and based on the presentation and your cover letter, I, I'm fine with, um, moving forward with the letter as it's presented, but again, I want to respect, uh, my colleagues on the, on the panel. So if, if, you know, maybe there's more of a story to tell, or more examples or photographs in that annual report that, um, better explain or elaborate on, on those essential services that you use Measure G funds for, maybe that's the place to make that more robust. Um, I mean, you have pictures in there and there are examples of how it was spent, so there may be some input on that, but I feel like that would be the mechanism for the public education, and, um, for purposes of what I think we're convening for, I, I think you've done a great job, and my, my compliments to the staff. I've, I've lived in this city my entire life, for the most part, and I'm extremely proud of the work that, uh, the city has done to keep this place nice and safe, so, um, my compliments to staff for your work.
Any other comments or discussion?
Um, I'll just, uh, Amy Lyman, I will just say, I'm a new member of the city, and I do appreciate, uh, reading the report, which I also saw appreciated the pictures, and, um, I do though think that perhaps, um, a bit more detail, um, for someone like me who's a newer member of the city, not as familiar with the places and the, um, examples, could be helpful in saying, you know, here's where your Measure G money has gone, and here's where it's, you know, kind of might go in the future, just based on the examples. So, um, there are, just in some places like the street sidewalk and storm drain program, um, I did see the West Sierra Road shoulder repair, and I did read kind of why, because there was potentially some, uh, perhaps damage that could have happened with El Nino or whatever, um, something more, a few more details to help people understand what happened, why it happened, what perhaps the city council's decision was. I, I don't think a very long report is necessary, but perhaps, um, in each section, a few more just very straightforward specifics about, this is where your money went. I just always think that's helpful for citizens to see that and feel good about the taxes that we pay. So, um, that would be my one, my one comment as a newer member of the community.
Any other comments?
Um, having just briefly went through it this afternoon between, between things, um, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, what we have in front of us. More details would be nice, mostly like backgrounds of why we wanted to spend this money. We spent it, but why we were leading up to spending it would be nice, but I, I agree that this report covers quite a bit, and maybe the more details going forward.
Well, I've actually gone around the city, and I have been seeing the different works that have been done, like by the creek on West Sierra, and I do know about the basketball court, and I do know about the improvements that are going to be happening. So as I look at that, and then I look at the figures here, I feel real comfortable saying I can see that this Measure G money, I can actually see it's being taken care of already. There's a lot of information here, but I think it's very thorough on my part, so, um, I have, uh, I have no complaint. I don't see anything wrong with them. There's plenty of information here. I can't imagine wanting any more.
If I may add, um, the, uh, the report that Damon and I put together is a report that is far beyond in terms comparing it to the other cities that I've worked and compared with. This is a, a combination of other reports that I put together for one city, and it's an evolution of what people are wanting to see, what people wanting to, uh, 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 learn from the Measure G and from, from transactions and sales and use tax, and it gives you an information that, uh, has a lot of information that would help citizens to know more about the, the, the sales, the transaction stacks.
Does someone want to make a motion? If you, if you'd like to accept this letter?
I would make a mo, I, I'd make a motion, uh, that the, um, the annual report and the letter to the council, uh, be transmitted as, as it is. I think that some simple additions in the report, maybe links to your website that have a lot of the agendas and the projects that were approved and the dollar amounts to go deeper into those general numbers, uh, would be helpful and easily done, but I, I make the motion that we send this to the council as it is.
And I would second that. Okay, we have a, a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion, any additional discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
This is a formality, but just
Oh, sorry.
Just public comment, just as a formality.
Oh, yes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Member Esquie?
Aye.
Member Lyman?
Aye.
Member Savano?
Aye.
Member Van Dyke?
Aye.
Chair Whipple?
Aye.
Unanimous?
What else do we need to do tonight?
Um, I, you know, I will just, I'll just add that, um, as we wrap up this current fiscal year, uh, we're going to be looking at, um, scheduling something probably, well, it's, it's going to be right after the audit's complete, so we're, you know, we're looking at, um, although we could do it the end of November, December timeframe, that's usually a good time for most people, so it would probably make sense to do it early in January for the, for 15, 16, the year we're in now, and, um, we'll certainly take all the comments we got tonight and bolster it for next time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, we are adjourned until the next, a meeting is called.
Great job.
Great, yeah. Excellent, thank you.
Now we get together only once a year.